Are we ready?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to workshop for the city of Vernon July 5th, 2022.
Thank you, Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to come and do your work and admit that you will be done. In our city, we ask you, Heavenly Father, that you have your hand upon us and have your hand upon our city. In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the free and healthy republic which stands one nation, under the power of the Constitution of the United States of America.
Before we start with items on our agenda, we have some other things, basically, the governor's going to take care of that. Ms. Powell?
My name is Kimberly Powell, I'm with Legendary Line Maintenance, so be honest with me. It came to my attention the other day that we had not came back in and asked for a renewal contract. So when I spoke with the clerk to get on the agenda today, she said she'd already made it. So with that being said, I went through the contract and it doesn't have a renewal, asking for renewal. There's not an end or a start date. There's a start date when we sign the contract, but it doesn't state in the contract to come every year and ask for renewal. But I will continue to do that. And with that being said, should have came back in May, but I was thinking September in my mind for some reason. So asking for renewal of the contract, we do not want to change our process, it's going to stay exactly the same. So it's like $299.60 a cut. So we don't want to change anything this year whatsoever. And probably won't next year, we don't know what that holds, but as of right now, we will not change anything this year.
Well, this is a workshop, so...
Right, I understand.
Yeah, we'll have to just put it on the agenda for the next meeting. And Karen, can you get a copy of her?
I did, I brought her copy because she said she didn't have one. Okay. Go ahead. You're good, go ahead. So you... I find it clear.
No, what I was saying was, since this workshop, can't we discuss having a renewal date if that's what we want?
Yes.
Okay.
We can discuss whatever you got, we can.
So we can do that and then vote on it. And so it was in May when...
It's in May 19th when I pulled it up to print it out today, so that should have been when we asked for it, but I think there's a lot going on with everything in the world at that time.
Yeah, it does not specify a timeframe. Like she said, there's no timeframe, that's just May is the date that y'all entered into the contract. May of last year.
So you'll have us doing with the timeframe now on it?
No, she...
Oh, what? Are you going to cut it? You're going to do it?
Have you still been cutting?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Now, she was just letting us know that she thought it wasn't for renewal, it's really technically not, because you don't have that set up that way, but she was just letting us know she's not changing the price.
We have another contract with another city and every year we have to go and ask for renewal contract. And then we discuss whether we're going to lower the price or anything like that. And I thought, for some reason, y'all was in September, so that's why I was going to come in September. And then when I pulled it up for her today, printed out, it doesn't even have that in there at all. So...
Okay, so we... She's just here to reassure us that they're going to continue the price that they're going to pay. So you have a date today that you want to go on it? Or just like from our next meeting?
It doesn't matter, whatever works for y'all is fine with me.
Let's see that for the next meeting, our next regular meeting. We're just going from that date.
Okay, Karen, can you just add the date? That we can sign and all? And put it on there for our regular meeting?
Okay. And I got one more question I wanted to ask our state. We are now doing the county offices. So we do this Vernon Library. I know once before we had gotten prices for y'all for other things. If we want to go back and re-discuss those things, we're here in Vernon more now than we were. And we do more here than just the cemetery. We do the schools here too.
That might be something we want to look at at budget time.
Yes.
Uh-huh. Anything else on that?
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Did you ask Mike?
Thank you, thank you. All right, update from Jimmy Kurt.
All right. The motor for the filter, $1,000, basically, so basically, I have it fastened. Y'all basically know all that. There's two motors in the back, that's your premium, go ahead and order them separately. One of them, about $434, the other was $395.
You've been to motor for that anywhere, still there?
No, that's part of the problem. I'm hoping once they get that cleared on, it'll be 100%. Probably going to have a couple of... A couple of songs pretty bad shades, so I'd say that couple of dollars. And I've been talking to y'all about the new permit, if we start that, we're having to get some more sampling. There are a few parts that are planted that are very critical that need to be working as soon as possible. I've been on the whole backflow pump process. I've got a plug for $1,911.64.
Permit?
Not, well, let me look at it, make sure I write something down. $1,911.64. That's basically for four relays. And three timers.
Three timers?
Three timers total. There's two the same and one I don't. That is... Appears to be shipping and installation. And for... I just got this not too long ago. From the time we placed the order, we had two weeks delivery.
Two weeks?
The price they were giving us was $2,000 a timer. We knew that was wrong, so we dug into it a little bit more and actually we're getting everything for less than whatever asking for my time to discover. Ain't getting it installed. That doesn't mean that that's going to solve all the problems, but we went through. Right now, everything's what they're supposed to. You know, if you do get the grant, there's a lot of things that could be done to make it a lot better. But that's what I've got to have right now. And he found a few things that were not quite right. I repaired the air dryer, Jason, they just need to get it hooked back up. I repaired that in the afternoon. Need to get, appears to be the polymer system, it's there, the parts fix that. We bought about a month ago. Everything's there, we'll say get that hooked up.
How close are you really need the way? Is close close?
I was close two months ago. And there were a few people in-house to things that I can't really throw a price on, but I don't expect to be... A hundred bucks here, a hundred bucks there, less than 500 total. Probably way less than $500, but that we just got to get to it.
And you said that Jason already proved that the other two parts is around $500, so you got...
Them should be here. One, two days on one of them. I think it's the same one. Another one actually didn't stop the pumps. I will help them if they ask me to, to try to get that going again on some... I'm going to have to go on weekends. Now, the other thing, well, two things. Two inlet pumps have got issues. One of them, we're going to call it pump three, will sit there and run all day long, but it will not pump the drop. It will have to be pulled to see exactly what's wrong. I mean, it could be inlet valve, it could be lock nut. But it needs to be pulled because it's not doing anything. And then pump number one, same place, will pump, but it trips out constantly.
That's the three over there by the screen?
Yes, I'm sure he has one. I've been one day this weekend, reset it that morning, reset it at lunch, reset it at afternoon, and straight back with it. Needs to be sealed, but I would definitely just do pump three, get it back in hold, and do pump one. On three. Now, if you want to pull it yourself and take it to a shop, you can do that. If you want it to go, it's $850. I got your price, so check what you want to get.
Say that in your gimmick.
The motor people will come and pull it for $850. Take it out, take it to their shop, check it out, tell you what's wrong with it, and then go and pay for repair. Or you can pull it, take it to them, check what you want to get. I didn't know what y'all might want to do, so I called up there in the afternoon and got the price.
But if they do it, isn't that a better? What hap...
It's safer, I promise you.
That's what I'm saying. I hope that's what we're getting ready. It's safer for them to do it?
But you... As far as I know, I've been down there since we built, along with them, I pulled pumps in there and sent them to a backhoe and lifted them up. That's really not safe way to do it, but...
So it's safer for them to do it, is that what you're saying?
I didn't know what it's safe, I've been doing it that way at all.
Not only that, they still got a lot to do.
They got a lot to do, but it's there, it doesn't matter to me. I mean, I just, I've told you about their ass.
How much was it?
Eighty-five. Eighty-five.
Just to pull it and see what's wrong with it?
They'll pull it and take to the shop.
And put it back, is that what you're saying?
Now, they're going to fix it for that as well?
They will fix it, put it back, but they'll...
Take it, pull it in to...
You know, I don't know what's down there, I don't even really want to give you a price, but it could be $3,000, $4,000. If it's burnt up. But I don't think it is, I think there's something else because it did turn it. But just remember that because the flow increases, basically you got one more. Once you stand down there and reset it.
And these are the new ones that they just had installed?
Those are the ones that are 17 years. If your inlet pump wants to take, when it comes to the treatment plant, pushes it up to the top. Just for y'all to know, when your budget comes, with the new permit, the additional sampling there. Last Friday, we got an increase from lab for samples for next year. And I gave y'all price just under $2,000. That's actually going to increase to a little up $3,400, right at $3,500. Increase, now that's not total.
That's where the sample should take now.
It's going up $3,500?
It's going up. And due to, say if I'm going up a few dollars, plus the additional samples that you're taking, I figured a while ago at the house real quick that, I mean, every other week, you're taking over $100 more samples than you were latching on. You know, because of the permit required, you can take different samples. Like your monitoring wells, they went up. You're doing quarterly, they went up $120 a quarter. This one, we won't have to. And then... AG will be here for the motors that we did prove. That was the spray fill motor and the well to pre-motor. They'll be here Thursday morning. I suggested to Jason to let him start back well, get that done and over with, because when we get the spray fill, if you remember, we ordered a new motor because the motor is shot. But if the pump is frozen up, they'll stop there for a while. And, you know, y'all are given the prices it could be. Understand that when they get it down there and evaluate it, they'll send you a item of mine, bill exactly what it costs, break it back to their density.
We got to take cows down and make sure cows don't come in here while they're working.
I talked to Jason this morning, he's supposed to talk to you in the morning, and I would go down there and just get it ready to pull and chill up out there and just stay there. Stay there with them for a few minutes. The... The... Just excitement, the backflow coming by down there, just picking up some spares, hopefully. By the end of the month, I'll be done with it. I'm hoping. The rain, I'd have been done a long time ago, the rain would work a little bit. It's a limited system at what one or two. If anything, I have an AT&amp;T out here, they have went over it, they swear their stuff is right. I went down there and worked on it a little bit, not worked on it, just tried to figure it out. And I just need some direction on what y'all want to be doing next. Because they're swearing that their line is right, so...
We still don't know where they say it line?
I think they have figured all that out. I think it's all AT&amp;T's. I haven't, I've talked to the phone people while they've been here, but I haven't been here with them. And it appears that it's all theirs. And they have checked it all out, they've got all that figured out. And I know that I think he's come back the second time, and I didn't know about checking again. So my suggestion to use to call the company to come back to me and check the equipment one more time. Because we're going to be in the same place we were before, going to have to take them offline if we don't get them fixed.
So who do we need to call?
AG.
I've used them a lot of places, but they are actually a representative for the company to build the equipment. I didn't know that until I started looking for somebody to work on. I talked to them again, told them exactly what we've done, what the telephone number says. But definitely do something. Because running it, the way I'm telling them to run it, it can be... Y'all think y'all have several work leads to them, you know?
Yeah.
Disjointed fluctuation pressure.
Yeah, it's popping up everywhere.
So we need to call AT&amp;T back in?
I don't think so. I don't think they'll come back in. What I've guessed...
What company are you asking them?
AG. Somebody look at the equipment. AT&amp;T says, unless, somebody's heard different, AT&amp;T says their wire is good.
That's the guy, he told me, he said, "I've been working on this the last six or seven years."
I wish I knew more about it. It's an antiquated system. I don't know if anybody uses it anymore, but I used to work on it a little bit here together. Been a long time, everybody else is 100%. But that's a very, very proxy thing. 100% works.
Is that what you think we should do, though?
I think you should, especially if you get that grant, moving forward there. I know that y'all, it's getting off a little bit, I know y'all got a grant. But I'll possibly put some sky systems and generators and lift stations. I would definitely try to look that up. Put a transducer, a phone, whichever way that, you know, whichever way you go, I mean, there's different options, but it's a whole lot easier. Whole lot less trouble. You can actually send the government any time, I'm sure.
But as of right now, we need to contact the company, get it back to Ag to look at it before we end up following on their face and get basic instructions.
That's what I'm telling you. I'm telling you that, you know, if an emergency comes, somebody's got the manual that they're turning on, and you'll have one, but...
What we've already had is...
Well, yeah.
That comes to trouble like a weekend full ass.
But that's really not the way. You have a main break, you don't have that, you need to come home, nobody's going to know what you got. I have watched it very closely, it is not running at all, it's not picking up none. But you can, if you wanted to prove somebody that needed a figure, throw at it, to have somebody come look at it. I don't think it'll cost this, but I'd say $1,000. The last time they came, I don't know what their bill was, but I came to you and it's what they told me, $9,000.
How much?
$1,000.
For them to come in?
For them to come and evaluate it.
They should be evaluated as well.
But I don't believe it'll cost that much, but that's the number they gave me. I think Jason's checking on it. He'll be the generator shop, you know? Try to keep that on full front. I think that's all I got, another hidden, another hidden.
Thank you, Jimmy.
You're welcome. If anybody wants to use quotes, shrink them up. Get them to carry them.
Does anybody else have anything for Jimmy? Just, you let Karen get a copy of them?
Yes, she can have it, I got it. I'll give it to you after.
Okay. Number two, and I'm going to go with Washington County. This will have to be, of course, David on, sort of going with Virginia, but I want y'all to be aware, so y'all decide, I guess, tonight if y'all... And is this because it needs to be updated or is somebody asked to update it? Ma'am?
I don't think it has to be updated.
Well, the day that I looked at it was... Oh, yeah, it has to, it's just...
It's the board that says we still want to do it, is that what you're...
Right, basically. If you still want to do it, this is the contract, we'll sign it.
Well, the last time, how long it's been, it's been a very difficult one, isn't it?
Yes. Maybe you sent a copy of this to your firm? Yes, I did. I just asked them down by the 23rd to draw up. Y'all will put on the agenda and give... Our sales and the attorney found to look at it and make a decision?
When did you say it's got to begin by?
About the 23rd of July.
Was that next week?
It's two weeks from Thursday.
Huh?
It's two weeks from Thursday, it'll be after our regular council meeting.
So we have time to send it in, okay. That's what I was like, do we have time?
Anybody else have anything on that? Number three, waste management billing discrepancies. Do I go? You want to give us a rundown?
Affectionately known as my dumpster project.
Yeah, just pretty much spell it out for us and do it.
Okay. So somehow I decided to start checking on these, I can't remember which one caught my eye, and I was like, hmm, that looks weird. And when I started digging, I noticed that there's a lot of discrepancies between the actual invoices we get from Waste Management, the pickup list that Tisha, my contact at Waste Management, sent me, like what the guys are physically supposed to do when they get out there, and our billing system. So I prepared a little packet here about the discrepancies. And basically, if you have any questions, ask me, the gist of it being that I need to know if you want me to or am I allowed to contact Waste Management and/or the customers to resolve the situations? Or what kind of action do y'all want me to take?
Who is it on the customer or always me?
Some of both. Some of it's ours.
Okay, so...
Some of it, I'm looking at having to call a customer and be like, hey, so we're just fixing to start charging you a bunch more money, or you can have less also. Which one would you like? And there's supporting evidence in here showing like how it appears that the discrepancies started happening, the ones that started happening on our end. Some of them are Waste Management. I would have to contact her and ask her more extensive questions, hey, you know, like, can you have any records of this? Why is this like this? Can you physically have some change of this? Why is this charged like this? It doesn't make any sense.
Now, they do have a gentleman that came out, would come out.
They have a what?
They have a, I don't know what he is, like a manager or something, because he's come here before.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I don't know what he could help you with. He's been, because you need to get with the billing person.
Basically, I just need permission to do more digging.
Well, they did raise a raise in January 22nd. And like she was saying, some of the prices don't even go with the new rate. So basically, what she's wanting to know from y'all is because some of the customers are not paying as much as they're supposed to, are y'all going to let her raise their rates to the correct level, or how do y'all want to do this?
See, how to say they can live with letting, I mean...
We are. They're not billing correctly. Back a while back, previous court, we were told during budget time, and we had our discussions, that we were, did not need to raise the garbage rates because we were doing very well during our making on the garbage. What they have found sounds like it's not the residential cans, it's the dumpsters where the price is different.
Yes.
And from what I'm reading here, and what they said, either City Hall made an error when they set up the account or set up the charges, or it was Waste Management did. It was us? It's not.
So some of it was...
It was, some of it was Waste Management? Well...
Well, like for instance, the very first one, Vernon Elementary School, is probably the craziest one. Because what we are being billed on our invoice does not go with what they are physically picking up, does not go with the standard rate sheet from Waste Management, does not correspond to what we are billing them for. So like I need to do, I just need everybody on the same page, me, her, and the customer.
Well, in my mind, you need to get the city and Waste Management on the same page before the customer is contacted. That's my opinion.
Yes.
Because we don't want to upset anybody if it can be reconciled without that being the case.
Yes, ma'am.
If we have to change the rates, I'm thinking that that's going to have to be done in a meeting, and that's definitely going to have to be reviewed by our attorney.
Well, this, I'm not talking about changing the rates, I'm talking about charging them what they actually should be charged per the rates we're already charging everybody else.
Exactly.
Well, I don't see where that's the problem. As long as you don't, I, I don't want, we're not going back now, and you don't want to do that.
No, no, no.
No, no, no. But currently, I think that we should be charging them the rate they're supposed to be paying. You understand?
But you have to, that's what I'm saying, she has to make sure that...
That's what she said she's going to do. That's what she's saying. So basically, you have the permission from me.
Me too.
We, you know, to go ahead.
Your want for her to contact waste management, get them and us on the same page, and then, then the customer.
Is that okay with you?
Yes, ma'am.
We're gonna contact them, send them out.
And deal with the customer and speaker.
Take pictures for evidence of whatever, if they have to contact the customer, they'll have to proof it, and.
Yeah, well.
Go out with him, and he's gonna be able to spot, and make sure what your charges is what we're paying.
Well, and that's what she was saying, one of them is not, has a dumpster, that's not being charged, is being charged for two cans, but not a dumpster as well, and that was probably an issue where it was set up here, and it wasn't in there, probably, is what I'm thinking.
It was, from what I can tell, that I found an email where the person said, hey, waste management, drop off a dumpster at Bus Farm, and then the charge was never added to the Bus Farm account.
Yeah, so I'm saying, I think once she's able, her and waste management are able to settle it, then it won't be so difficult.
I bet you she settled with them for waste management for.
Yes, ma'am.
Does that cut you, according to this, there's like six, six accounts?
There is, um, Vernon Elementary School, Vernon Bus Farm, which is basically both the same people, cause it's Washington County school board. Um, the post office is a small one, it's just about a lock bar, Dollar General lock bar, Home Street Pizza lock bar. Um, Vernon Express is a two-part one, it's the lock bar and also, um, somebody messed something up somewhere because we're not charging them for the dumpster that they actually have, um, to what, to my knowledge. Um, and Donut Land, that's another one where what they're charging us for and what we're charging the customer for is two different things.
So Rose is basically commercial, is that it?
Yes, ma'am, I haven't really gotten very far on my, um, trash can audit yet.
To that point, it'll be, is this what you have now, is commercial?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Are we out of all the money because of this?
Some, probably.
Yes and no, because like, some of this is gonna make y'all unhappy, um. So, for instance, Vernon Elementary School, we, we should be paying if waste management, uh, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty-one cents a month, but they're only billing us three hundred and ten dollars, and I don't know why. So we're underpaying waste management, and you, yeah, we're making money, but not correctly. But then, when you go around to what we're billing them for, we're not billing them enough, so we're being under billed and we're under billing them, because none, nobody matches, I just want everybody to match.
Get with the supervisor or somebody from waste management.
I'm gonna have to, um, well, what my idea is, is that I'm gonna contact them and be like, hey, this one, this one, this one, we need a physical audit of what's actually out there, and then go from there with waste management, and then however that shakes out, I guess I'll be back in here to let y'all know, and y'all can tell me how you wanna go about charging or not charging, or discussing it with the customers, does that, does that sound right?
Yes.
Really, like Chad said, if you have to have somebody from waste management come out, one of the outside watchers, we go with them and verify what's there. You're probably gonna be able to scrape most of that, like you said, basically what you've got right here is probably gonna be, gonna come back and say, hey, we
Y'all don't see much.
We'll bill them more, or we've got the charge.
This is my spreadsheet. All right. And I've got the paper for the next one, too. The next thing, I've got the paper.
Okay.
Thank you, Rose.
Yes, ma'am.
So, number four, you're talking about the error in billing.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that what we've got right here, or you got something else?
No, if you, I don't know if you actually have this part, it's about, um, Satoria Galloway?
Yes, it's in our package.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't make the package.
Oh, this is Satoria's name.
So there's been an error in billing?
Do, do you wanna hear the story?
They can dance.
They can dance, yes.
Yes.
So, it wasn't that the meter was being read wrong, it's that it was the whole entire wrong meter. And then, once we discovered that, we were like, oh, wow, we really did massively overcharge this poor lady.
Massive?
Yes, massive.
Massive.
Well, it's got on the, the paper that you have, that she's, she's requesting a cash refund. She, we do owe it to her, so.
This isn't one of those issues where they're asking, like, we dealt with in the past where.
No, ma'am.
No.
This was. This, this was actually correctly.
Done wrong.
Yes.
All the way.
Yes, all the way around.
She had noticed, I was in this one.
Because she thought somebody still accused somebody of stealing water, and I went along with her, telling her, they, they kicked that person, was there, she accused that person also.
She paid the bill, and now she.
I'm with you, Miss, I'm there with you. I did, I did, I did.
She did pay this, um, and she does want a cash refund, minus she said we, uh, do a credit for just the bill that she owes, that she really owes.
No, when she says cash refund, she, she means she'll accept a check.
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I don't even think we have to vote on this.
No, you don't, we're in this. We wanted you to be aware, in case you were getting phone calls or anything, that, yes, it was, it was an error.
It was an error.
An honest, an honest error, and we fixed it.
Yeah, just give her, give her money back. Everybody in agreement on that?
Yeah.
Please. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You done good, Miss Rose.
Thank you.
Number five, work funding in management. Um, this isn't even, this doesn't cover. Well, we've thrown our brains out on this, and, um, I mean, we can talk about it, whatever y'all wanna do, but we do need to say, hey, special workshop.
Workshop, because this is a lot.
To, that's what we've already said, we were going, well, what we already took place, we're gonna write. And designate work class, what we're gonna do is, we need to really have a workshop that's just nothing but that, because it's, it's gonna be tough.
One thing, me and the clerk didn't find out is, uh, what's gonna spend of the money that we put in there, how it needs to be labeled and all. Radios, replace, replace the money in the budget, right?
Pagers.
Pagers, that's what I mean, pagers, not radios.
And one of those purchases that was made for the fire department was out of care fund, not, also, I'm not.
So we got to go back and look at that, with pagers out of care or our part?
I, I don't recall, that's what I'm saying. So you're saying, so I know that to begin with, we used care funds.
Kinda get it out the care fund, because we didn't have it.
Before, yes, before we got the.
They needed it.
And then we designated, we said that we were gonna designate other money to the fire department, and we did it for the purchase. And once we, the reason that I believe that we need to have a workshop just on this, because once we bought, bought it on this, and then we voted on it, then it has to you have to go back into the website, and you have to specify on what, what they're mentioning on everything.
Therefore, checking on this money, they are any of the people.
Yes, yes, and they're gonna come back later and check it on us, and that's why we need to be very careful.
And this is, and my big year, you know, they showed it on so the citizens are in airport now, cause they think we got this money.
Yeah, we don't.
That we can use to eat.
But it's not, we can't use it.
And, and you can't, you know, cause they're like, well, what y'all gonna do with all that money? I'm like, you know, I've been broke with that.
They'll come right down here and I'll really.
You know, and, but I'm saying, and then I tried to explain to them, we cannot use this money for any, for all this stuff you guys are talking about. You know, like in your free guns and all of that, we can't, we can't do that.
It's, this is, this is a different problem.
I'm gonna tell you something, if we had a emergency service, a police department, and a fire department, we, this money would all go to them. Every bit of it, go to emergency service.
That's, the fire department is the reason that we out there.
Got it, Chris, but I'm saying, if we had those services here in this city, this money would all go to them. All of it. We wouldn't be able to do anything, cause it's really for emergency services.
It's for spending whole things that we otherwise have no need to do, so we can't get a grant for them, right? And it's very, it's, it's more specific than any grant that I've ever seen or worked.
Oh, no, they'll kill you on this, and you better not step off either, telling you now. Once we step off in the wrong direction. We need to be correct, and we need to be specific.
We got to find that word.
I'm telling you now.
If everybody's in agreement, Karen, um, you're not gonna be able to do it this week. As soon as you're able to talk with the attorney, see when she's able to be, she needs to help us walk through this, too, she's doing it in other, with other cities that she's, um, that are in basically the same boat that we are. Um, by the way, sorting out what they're doing. So, see when she can be at a meeting, and then correspond with the rest of council, I just need a day.
Okay.
Or two notice, and I'm good.
It don't matter to me what day.
No, to y'all.
No, no matter to me.
Okay. Just when we can all be here, preferably when we can all be here, so, I mean.
We could enjoy it.
Yeah, right.
So we need to wait, uh, how long do we have with this to back and wait?
We, I put in the extension, when I first found out about it back then.
I'll go by ready today.
It was March or May, whenever. Karen, when did you come in?
March.
Then the March, okay, it was the end of March when I found out about this and requested, uh, ju, basically, we had to just request an extension because we had not decided what we were gonna do with the plan, and we're not the only city that did that, across the board, nobody's really decided. Or not many have decided what they're gonna utilize all the funds for, so it was just basically an extension that was put in for online on the website.
Yeah, but the media, they put it out there. The media did.
They put it out there to, before we even, we were getting, um.
And people were like.
So, and, and they're not, and I thought that we were gonna be able to use it for more than what we.
Me too, and they, they was calling, they was calling, like, what are you gonna do with all that money now? And I'm like.
Is there any more discussion on this tonight? Does anybody have anything else?
I got a few stuff, I, maybe I'll give you some graphs that I heard, but throw some of these, these, uh, FEMA projects, maybe. Uh, fourth of July, overall, fireworks show was good, there was two food vendors, and I know Lonnie stayed busy. I don't know, I was, Tim had to start showing up for meetings, we have got, camps are gonna have to hold in the county. He's got to show up.
I agree, but unless some of us are gonna go out and find him and drag him to meetings, he's been requested to be at meetings, he knows he's supposed to be at, at one meeting a month. I think everybody here that's been here can tell you that we've been dealing with this for.
Cause we have.
Y'all, y'all, we're.
We have some big issues.
We are getting run over by her.
We got some big issues here, and fourth of July, people, the citizens, let me know we have big issues.
The bathroom complaints all night, and ever since.
They let me know they had big issues. Grass was not cut, they gave me, I mean, it was like, as long as I got in my car, I bought some food and went and got in my car and sat down to eat it, because I I couldn't, I had, I had no peace.
Jason and I were bombarded the whole night there, and since, we've heard nothing but complaints about that.
And today.
The grass, and nothing for the kids to do, and it was just, they loved the fireworks, but they were very, very, very disappointed with the, the, the activities for children.
Everything that I've heard was great, was great, and the fireworks were great, and everything in the middle was not so much.
I went by me today.
I know they cut the grass, cause I was out there, they was cutting the grass.
Yeah, but the parking lot looked terrible, and I think what, what a lot of people are talking about, not just cut, not really cut the grass, see them all, the grass growing on the infield. And that used to not be like that, it continued to get worse and worse every year, and I, I don't, I'm not a grass man, there got to be something we can do about it.
It, that out there is not a job that we're, that we're paying for.
Okay.
I mean, we pay him a certain amount, there's in the contract, but you're looking at a job that's probably worth a hundred thousand dollars a year, if you're gonna keep these infield tracks.
Chad, in the past.
Let's go back to the past, then.
Yep.
Go, go, go to, we always look at the past, we in the future. I'm gonna go ahead and tell you, I've worked on them football fields, and I've worked on baseball fields, and if you ain't out there every three days or every other day to do it, it's gonna look just like it does right there, right now.
Well, first of all, the city can't afford hundreds of thousands of dollars, we all, we know that, but we also can't continue to sit back and shut up every time somebody says, well, he's, he's doing everything that he can, because I've seen it done before, I've seen it with boards and without boards, and it's been taken care of better times, and let. Exactly, and there's a board out there, Chad.
Well, he didn't have a whole lot of participation from the public, and the last one didn't have it, this one hadn't had it. I mean, when Josh Boyett was doing it, I mean, all of us coaches got together and wanted to help him.
And, and.
But that's, that's the thing about it, we don't have coaches here anymore, we, we have this, what they just call a.
Jason had two things he wanted me to bring up about the fourth of July.
Okay, let, let me ask this one question, cause I believe I heard it, but I wanna make sure, cause there was some talking in between. Gary, did you say that the bathrooms were not open?
They were not open, they had four quarter bodies there.
And there was, from what I understand, that there was lines on those quarter bodies.
Did we know if there's something wrong with the bathrooms?
I haven't, we have no idea.
I know that the bathroom pump station's working, so I went out there, it was clogged up, about a month ago, I went and clogged it, it's working fine. When I went into the bathrooms, there were several of them that were not in good condition.
But I didn't think.
Um, they had turned the water off to the toilets, cause the toilets need the insides replaced, which is easily, you know, done, but I asked him, Jason asked him, do you need some help, he said, he's got it under control. But there was a couple of the toilets that didn't work, and there was several that did, one bathroom, I think, uh, one toilet was out. Uh, with tape, like, no, do not use, and I only had two toilets out, but from my knowledge, all the sinks were working, and all the rest of the toilets were working. And I went there myself a month ago, three weeks ago.
You said Jason asked you to.
Well, he had said with, he thought it was a, uh, I have a report, but he thought it was the regular council meeting, he was confused, cause he went through the whole day, but he did want me to bring up some things about, you know, we had to do out there that we weren't supposed to, well, we weren't supposed to, but we ended up doing it, like building the stage. Um, I got the day off, I didn't know they had to do that, I would come in and work, they, I had worked all, see, y'all know what happened last weekend, I had, had the day off for three weeks, so Jason let me take the day off. But then him and Tim had to come in and last minute, in the rain, build the stage, because they had me get the lumber over there Friday. I had the lumber there Friday morning, eight o'clock, all, every bit of the lumber, and three pounds of nail, uh, screws, were there, ready to go for that stage to be built, they said they had a crew coming to build it, that was what Jason was told. Come the day of fireworks, Jason and Tim, our Tim, on public works, were out there in the rain, had to put the stage together. So that was, that was one thing, when we did everything, we were swamped, we were able to get our grass cut, our flags put up, and everything that we were supposed to do, all of our responsibility done, even though y'all all know what we had to do the past couple of weeks, we have been slammed, especially that water tower going down, we've had nothing to leak, problems, sewer things, we're just, you know, taking care of, but even with all that, we were, and we're a three-man crew, we were able to get it, which is, because we've been humping, took a lot of hours in, working on the trail, not taking a break. Um, he wasn't exactly happy about having to do that, he did it, Jason always, you know, does whatever we need to do, no problem. But he wanted me to bring it up to he again, cause last year we had to do it, but there was more guys up there last year, but last year we also had to go help do that, which we don't mind helping, but we would like a lot on our place with public works. As it is, that's the parks and rec thing, we don't mind helping parks and rec, I do it all the time, I've been there, backwards, I'm doing that, can't help, and all they gotta do is let me know it needs to be done, and I'll make room for it. That was one of the things, and the other thing was to bring up, the firework guys, to tell you guys, they enjoyed it, thank you so much for the opportunity to do fireworks, and they look forward to, um, maybe future services, whatever, but they were very, I mean, thankful for y'all. Um, that's pretty much it, everything else could be something that would go into a regular council meeting.
Well, shout out to you and Jason and Tim, we appreciate it, we're all involved, especially over the last two or three weeks, I mean, uh, y'all went above and beyond, and we appreciate all of you.
Well, I came by there today, cause I was paying my city, the gate is still open, the stage is still up?
The stage, that, that's. We ain't got, we ain't got moved, but they got so much going on.
Oh, damn, well, I didn't know why, but it's still up, I didn't know.
I didn't worry about it.
Okay, but then.
Turn it down, too. Like you asked, okay.
I wouldn't worry about it.
You know, but I just said, this is what I saw, the gate is open, was open, and the stuff was good, the gate was open. Yeah, but I'm just saying, this is what I saw, the gate is open, was open, and it's not supposed to be, the gate was open.
I've been finding that a lot, I've been finding that a lot, I've been having to go back behind and close the gate.
And the gate was open, and all the decorations is still up, or were they at Swansplex, nothing, it's like they walked out, nothing, I'm telling you.
I text Jason this morning, told him about the word about the trailer, I knew y'all got a lot going on.
Well, I didn't know who was responsible for moving the trailer, I just saw it still there, you know, but I didn't.
Okay, let me, Gary, you donated the trailer to the city.
Not that trailer, but yes, we, I've got one that has.
Okay, so that's not the one?
Yeah.
Okay, so, and I, I thought that was the one that was being donated that has.
Has one, that one's got sides on it, but the other one don't, which will work better, be kinda lower.
Okay, so who, whose trailer?
That's mine, I got two. Yes, I am donating the other one to the city.
So the wood that was baulked the other day, is that gonna transfer over to that?
Transfer over to the city, yes, it's already mounted on it, that stage is a fourteen foot six by, right at fifteen, and uh, they said that would plenty be for a full band for two hours, so that, that's being donated too. And when we get through a little hinge, it just folds right over. On the trailer, all of it will be stored right on that trailer.
That's great, thank you. Thank you very much.
We'll get it, um, but it's gonna be, if we have to do it, it's gonna be either Friday late or next week. I'm supposed to be off Wednesdays, and I haven't had one, and I gotta come in tomorrow too, because of the situation with Dollar General, we've got to get, they told us we had to be done in the month, and now they're saying they want to open on the eighteenth, so we've got to go over there and get that done, before we planned on this, I gotta come in tomorrow, and we've got leaks that have been popping up from that tower situation that we've got to get, we got one underneath Church Street out there that I got to cut the road up, and that's probably gonna do that, uh, on, on, Gary had it, so, on the Circle Eight side. Y'all know right there by the south style bridge, uh, south bridge hairstylist, whatever that leak right there, we're gonna have to cut into the road, the reason we haven't done it yet is because we have Fourth of July coming up and all kind of other stuff, and we were waiting on locates, and I do have to cut that road up, it's gonna be a mess. So then we're gonna have a big old cut, that brand new road, and we've got to postpone it as long as we could, but we can't, and well, we got to get it done. Um, so we're gonna be doing that this week, probably Thursday, now, we were gonna do it the Thursday anyway, and I was gonna take my day off tomorrow, but now we've got to dodge in, or someone's gonna come in in the morning, and we're gonna lock that out. Um, since they went ahead and opened that hole up for us, we're gonna take, utilize that situation.
So the, the trailer's fine, works out for right now?
It'll be next week.
And don't worry about that, I'll let it fill, I've got a guy, cleaner might come in and carry that, but regardless, I, I don't need the trailer.
And if I have to, we'll get that cleaned up Friday afternoon up there, I didn't know, which I haven't had a chance to do anything else, but if, if, if nobody else goes and very clean up behind the fourth, I'll do that there, and Tim will do it.
And the grass is not cut at the other four feet?
Grass hasn't been cut during the minute, it's, I, I was noticing the other day, I was like, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to get over there some more.
The grass is not cut, it's hot.
Just to get it cut.
Okay, I'm gonna.
It's gonna get so bad, we, it's, it's very difficult to cut it when it gets that hot. Chair, our mowers up.
Well, you saw it, didn't you?
Yes, ma'am, it's, it's knee-high, it's big.
Karen, can you contact Timothy and find out when the cleanup plans are for, the fourth plate?
I've been going over there checking on the City Grove Park a lot, and I've been cleaning up over there a lot, wanting to get a chance.
Does he believe, if he was gonna get on the City Grove and get it made?
Shady Grove?
I know the last time Shady Grove was cut, was on June the eleventh, because I went over there, and I was standing there at three oh six, and I text him, I said, the park looks good, thanks, and he said, thank you. So I know the park was cut then, because I was standing at that park.
Well, because of the rain, I'm sure, and I know we can't get out there all the time, I know the rain, the rain is, because we have to get our stuff, more and more, because of the rain, it's just, it's overwhelming.
Jason said it's hard to use it more when the grass is wet.
Oh, yeah.
I got, I know, it's about three months old, I gotta put new blades on my old.
Sean is like.
The other night, whenever they was cutting over there, that big lawn mower that they use over there, the, the grass was so thick, I mean, it just, it just cut off, I mean, it would just bog down.
And those ones we got, there's a back heavy that even a little bit of water on there, the tires just spin, and it, it bogs down, we get, we get stuck a lot.
It's just more wet.
I have, um, something I need to ask council while I'm thinking about it, I got an email from, um, Cairo Shows, a follow-up, um, and I wanted to wait until tonight to see what everybody said about the fireworks, but they are wanting a, um, an evaluation, basically, a survey, for me, I wanted to wait and talk to you guys to see before I answer that. Um, and when I first talked with them about coming to do in the show, we did discuss next year, getting them in line. I, personally, I don't, you know, I don't know what's gonna happen next year, but I know for the last two years.
It's been hard.
I, I'm gonna tell y'all the truth, I, you know, I've shed a few tears over getting firework providers in here, and I don't want to see anybody have to go through that next year or anymore if we're satisfied. Um, so, I'm sure there's gonna be a follow-up, asking if we want to use them, and so, if it's okay with you guys, I'm gonna give them a good review, and I'm also gonna ask for price quotes, and if we can do something. So at our budget time.
There you go.
We've got it, and we can set the money, and then we can set the contract with them, and we will not go through.
Yes.
While I'm sitting here, we won't go through having to beg, because it wasn't followed through with. Because the last two years have been a knock, they're, so, Karen, I'm putting you on notice right now. I'm ready, so, is it okay with you guys to ask if I can give them a good review, and?
That's all I've heard is good.
And see about what they're pricing, and when they want, I know that, you know, they, every one of them does things differently, and they want to order by a certain time, and they may not be able to give me a, a, a price, but they can give me a roundabout, and then I'll bring it back to, to you guys.
You don't have to worry about the price, because you knew what you had to do it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we got a good price, they give us a good price and a good show.
Because if we're gonna have to do it, we got it, you knew it.
Well, and I do know that they reached out, who we, who we used to host last year, because it wasn't followed up with in January.
Yeah.
They actually reached out to them to see what kind of show they gave us, what, they reached out to Ashley, who's, who we used last year, to find out the size, what kind, about how long, so they actually, you know, conversed with one another on it, and Ashley was very helpful. They just, they couldn't do it because they didn't get told to order fireworks, so, but anyway, I, I wanted to make sure with you guys that it was okay before I answered them back and got any more information, but I would love to be able to say it. Now, if y'all want to find somebody else, go for it.
I'm satisfied, I was, well, the people, the people that was around me at the fireworks were very satisfied.
I, I haven't heard.
I didn't have, nobody complained, they all said it was good.
And there was a bunch of people went on Facebook with, you know, fireworks pictures, and thanking Vernon, the city of Vernon for doing it, and also, I just wanted to get the rest of your reaction before I responded to it. Okay. Does anybody else have anything?
I think I went through, give you FEMA stuff.
I'm hungry, Gary.
FEMA, FEMA P W two sixty-four, is two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, that's for a sewer plant. Should find out this week, where we understand it, that money is there for us to use, been there since. How long, Jamie?
I don't think it's been there, not that long, but it's been there for several years.
After eighteen, somewhere eighteen maybe, not ten.
Then P W two seventy-one, should find out about it this, this week. It's two hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars, ninety cent. And this was City Hall, Community Center, City Hall, and Jim Nason.
I don't think that's been cleared yet, is it?
Hmm?
I don't, is that being cleared? Are you looking into it?
We're pretty sure it's being cleared while I'm here, no, this, it was cleared.
We were told that, we were denied that.
Yeah. According to this lady, I mean, she's new now, I'm double checking her.
Well, that's why, and that's, that's, I'm telling you, we were told in the meeting that we were denied that, so.
You were denied, I know you were denied part of it because of insurance reasons.
And because of, um, deed issues.
The what?
Deed issues with the land that Jim said on, because our attorney was working with the school board to try and get that straight now.
Yeah.
That's not in that, that's, that's not in any of this FEMA paperwork, nowhere.
I'm just telling you what we were told.
The school bill was a deed issue.
Okay, anyway, we're finding out, I'm sure.
Okay.
If we do get them, our engineer said he, they've got so much on the table, they cannot handle, we'd have to go elsewhere. But money we do have, and they say is obligated, which we got checked with the county, I discussed it before. Citywide debris removal, when they tell me it's obligated, they're telling me it's deposited, they give, they've sent this money to Vernon. FEMA Center, and if it's under a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, that guy said, tells us, that they don't, that there's no, really no audits or nothing on it, there's really no, they don't come back and look at this, or some of that. Three ninety-eight, citywide debris removals, five thousand and forty-seven dollars. Number one seventy-seven, culverts, sixty-six thousand, fifteen dollars and eighty-four cents. Rosen Bridges, four thousand and ninety-five dollars and eighty-three cents. Rosen Bridges again, nineteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars and thirty-seven cents. Emergency protective issues, three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty, thirty cent. Traverse lift station, four thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars.
Well, was that doing, because I know they did, well, this is my thing, they did a lot of debris, you talking about more debris? Remove, or no, what they did.
Nobody could tell me if they.
They, well, they did a lot of.
Didn't say they didn't.
Yeah, they did.
Debris removal, not saying that, but where did the money?
I, well, my thing is, when they, I know they did a lot of debris removal, because they knocked on my door, okay?
But I, but I did the city.
But it was FEMA.
The city or the county?
It was FEMA, it was a FEMA person that knocked, it was a man, I don't know where it was from, he came to my house, knocked on my door, and told me, he needed to come on my property, and he goes to.
That, that's, and this is city money.
He was with Wheeler.
With the Wheeler Construction.
I don't know who he was with, I almost thought he had a hard hat on, told me he was coming, and I, I could tell.
That one seventy-seven that you're working on, and two oh one, which is the culverts, and the traverse, um, lift station, those are the ones that I had to put, uh, requested extension on, because Jason said the culverts were here, and I've not had time to do it, and on the lift station, they're waiting on parts.
Okay.
So those, there's an extension on those, that hasn't been approved or not yet, it was submitted.
I think it's been approved, from what they're telling me, yes. But I, like I said, I'm disaggravated, and you know that.
I know.
I know it is, disaggravating, I'm fooling around.
But I don't know, that's what I'm saying, I don't know that we received the money, I think we'll receive the money once the job is completed.
No.
So where's the money at?
What they're telling me, these smaller funds, they go ahead and write a check and send it to city, we need to check with the county, I'll give the county these figures, and he can look and see.
Okay. We've not been notified that we received. But I know that those were, one seventy-seven and two oh one are the ones that I specifically had go in, put the, the request in on, or they would have been closed out.
Well, I need to know, what is the status on Treasury Street, the extension of Treasury Street, what is the status on that now?
We, we have got a bunch of potholes over.
No, there's supposed to be a grant that we have.
I will do it with Fred, but I'll have that information for you.
Because they, they are coming to the meeting.
I got it.
I'll have it.
Yeah.
I dig it out for him.
Because they're coming to the meeting, and they just, they want to, well, they wanna know the status, because that's some of the people that saw the money. Okay, and they're, and they're.
Let's change that.
That's what we just met on the other day, that committee.
We can't, they're trying to explain. They're coming to the meeting to discuss that extension, or the, the next workshop.
They pretend we need to do something, there's a bunch of small potholes.
Well, Jason, they been filling them.
Been filling them and filling.
Filling them, but they lost them, and all kinds of messes come back, the road ain't gonna stay up here.
I've been taking one, I see.
I know what I see, because I go through there sometimes, and I'm walking, we walk through.
That asphalt patch is fifteen dollars a bag, we went through an entire thousand-pound pallet of that stuff, and you can't tell it out there. And that's just owing money down the toilet.
Because they do fill them, because I've gone through this scene with it.
I fill them about, about twice a month, I go through there, and I use rock, now, I'm pretty using a patch, because the patch don't hold, and it's expensive.
We got noticed that we were approved for a grant on Treasury Street, we've not received any funding or anything on that yet.
Well, for that project?
Yes, that part of it.
It's a two-part project.
Yes.
Especially the wells and the church street.
Well, and that, well, and the?
We just met, and picked, and selected, an engineer to administer it, that ain't been what a month ago.
They're still on the back of the work part of it, everything.
So it, it's way down the road now.
It's gonna be a while.
Yes.
Everybody received a, um, request for a day off, right?
Yeah.
Does anybody else have anything? Is it approved? Yes.
No.
We did, we just, I'm not about to.
We got somebody that. Thank you, Miss Rose.
Can I have a message to adjourn?
The way they're saying, can they?
Second. Discuss it more, all of them.